I. Momentarily, people may. Join us so. Yeah, so good afternoon, everyone. I like to call to order the. San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority. Regular meeting today is November 17 and approximately 3:30. If we could have roll call, please.
Director Abrika.
Here.
Director Bert.
Here.
Director Kremen.
Here.
And Director Combs and Director Pine are not present at the moment.
Okay, all right. So our next item is the approval of the agenda unless there any request for any modifications. I'll entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Okay, now I'll second.
Okay, Director Abrika.
Yes.
Director Bert.
Yes.
Director Kremen.
Yes.
Oh. Pine has joined us.
Right, I just joined, so I'll.
Okay.
The Director Pine is present. Our next item is will be approval of the minutes of the last meeting of October 27. And.
I'll make a motion to approve those.
Okay. And I'll second. Roll call.
Director Bert.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Director Abrika.
Yes.
Director Kremen.
Yes.
Director Pine.
Yes.
Okay. All right, motion carried. Our next item, number four, is public comment, so. An opportunity for members of the public to. Address the JPA. Board on any item. Any issue that is not on the agenda and. I'll ask Miko if you see anyone making any requests at this time.
I have not received any requests at this time. Would any member of the public like to speak? I have no request to speak at this time.
So then we'll we'll proceed to our next item. And. This is the consent agenda, kind of a continuing. Resolution in a way. That we've had, so. Unless there's. Any objections, we. I'll entertain.
I'm over approval of the resolution.
Right. I'll second. Roll call.
Director Abrika.
Yes.
Director Bert.
Yes.
Director Kremen.
Yes, subject to there being no public comment.
Yes.
Director Pine.
Yes.
Do we have anyone who wishes to make a public comment on this item? No. No requests to speak.
Okay, so we'll move on then to. Our next item, which. Is a. Presentation and I'll let our director. Let us know.
Thank you. Sure, thank you very, thank you very much. Chair Abrika. This afternoon, we are joined by representatives from our consulting team at Woodard and Curran. As you recall, Woodard and Curran has been retained to do some. Of the important preliminary investigations in the upstream Stanford lands for offstream detention. And I believe this afternoon, we are having a presentation, a verbal presentation by Ms. Millicent Crawford. And she is also joined by her colleague Ms. Cole. And I think if Kevin would like to provide. Any additional context unless he does. Kevin, do you have anything that you would like to add to my introduction?
Yeah, I would just mention that the board will recall. That we investigated upstream detention as part of the EIR for Reach Two. And about a year after the certification of the ER. We engaged in investigation to look at offline detention as a potential supplement. To the Reach Two project that was selected. So that's the only additional information I'll offer. Thanks, Margaret.
And Kevin, do Woodard and Curran have a slide set or is this just a verbal presentation?
Yes, we do.
Oh, fabulous. Thank you so much. Okay.
I will share my screen.
Fantastic.
And I believe you should be able to see the slides. Working?
Yes.
Great. All right. Well, hi, I'm Millie Kelly Crawford. I'm a senior project manager for Woodard and Curran, and I'm the JPA's. Project manager for this effort. I have 20 years of experience in floodplain management, hydrology and hydraulics. And in particular, riverine and levee studies and offline detention. So we're going to give you an update today on the offline detention. Project. Which has evolved into a feasibility study of placing detention in the upper portion of the watershed. So first, some little bit of background on our project objectives. As.
Can you go full screen?
Um. Well, I I can't because it will take over both of my screens, but I can try to make it bigger. Let me see.
No problem, no problem. Mayor Bert, you can go in your own view and go full screen.
Sorry, wasn't it so much easier when we were always in person? The really big screen in front of us. I can try to. If I can zoom in a little bit more, does that help?
Yes, that actually, that did help. Thank you.
Great. So I have the map up here of the sites that were originally identified by others that were. We were tasked to investigate and our objective was to determine. The feasibility to reduce the peak 100-year 24-hour flow. To 7,500 cubic feet per second at Pope Chaucer Bridge. And you can see the the two sites that were identified prior to us joining this effort. The former Plant Nursery Detention Basin and the Web Ranch Detention Basin sites. Our initial scope is to review background information that might be available from Stanford or others previous modeling. Identify information that we might need to collect from the field in order to fill any data gaps. Perform field investigations and do preliminary engineering. To provide a statement of feasibility. Constructibility and potential performance. So that was our scope of work. Background on how the work has progressed since the initial contract. We did complete our site reconnaissance in April. That was one day, just a site walk to go out there, meet with Stanford. Look at the sites and note any, you know, key or critical concerns. We developed a an assessment of the available data and information and submitted a draft and final data gaps technical memorandum. Identifying, you know, future field work that may be needed. In October of last year, we actually amended the scope to move some funding around and do some additional. Hydraulic analysis to really understand how the potential. Storage could perform both in the existing condition now and under the influence of potential future changes to Searsville. And the creek through this project reach. And in the early phases of the project, after that initial site walk and after looking at some of the available data and performing quick. Hydraulic calculations, we determined that the amount of space available at the former plant nursery was sufficient to provide the volume needed to. Provide sufficient storage. And therefore, we kind of focus from there on out on that particular site acknowledging that. You know, Web Branch is still a a location where storage could be accomplished, but it would just add potential for project cost. That may not be needed at this time to achieve our our goals. So we did prepare a preliminary site plan for the former Plant Nursery Basin location in December of last year. And this summer, we were also asked to take a look at potential costs of the project to kind of put a bracket on. You know, a high-low estimate of what this project could cost. And I have just delivered our preliminary feasibility study to the JPA. Which includes the site design and cost estimating and discussion of constructibility. So that brings us to today. I'll just quickly show you the site plan for this basin. It is contained within the subject property. You can see the creek running from right to left, top to bottom of the screen here on the left side in the dash dark blue line. Our basin is shown here, and while you can't read everything because this is a large format plan set. I will tell you that the the inflow is achieved by a diversion weir structure here on the the northwest portion of the parcel. The basin is offline, and then there is an outflow here on the southern end of the parcel that returns flow to the creek. Peak inflow is around 650 cubic feet per second, peak outflow is in the neighborhood of 50 to 65 cubic feet per second. Our basin at its maximum depth when full is approximately 13 feet deep. And the total storage volume will vary depending on whether we are in the current conditions or under some future scenario where Searsville is implemented. So 130 to 200 acre feet. So that is the rough project. We do maintain onsite site access through relocation of roadway. We have three-to-one slopes around the basin to facilitate continued land use by Stanford in whatever way they should choose. The basin's inundated only briefly and only during very high-flow events, so that land use should be able to continue as it has. Just a a quick. Highlight of the performance of the project. The peak flow at Pope Chaucer can be reduced to 7,500 cubic feet per second under both the existing conditions and under a future condition scenario. And obviously, a lot of flow reduction can be achieved by Searsville itself. So in this situation where that project is implemented, this offers supplementary flood protection. You can see from the graphs on the bottom here, which do not have the same scale, right? And the in the current existing condition. You know, we're looking at just over 8,000 cubic feet per second. And with the project, we get it down to 7,500. Then if we look at that potential future scenario, we've got flows that have already been reduced to just over 7,000. And we're bringing those down more in the 6,500 cubic feet per second range. Peak water surface elevations are reduced at the bridge around 0.86 feet. And in the future scenario, we see those reduce around half a foot. The preliminary opinion of probable cost has. You know, we do have many unknowns, of course, at this stage of development of the project, but we're looking at around 35 to 75 million dollars on a low-high. Cost basis. We're excavating 350,000 cubic yards of material to produce this basin footprint. If we are able to potentially go beyond the property boundaries to the north, which has been discussed with Stanford a bit. That could be reduced because we are cutting into a large hillside. We could reduce the amount of cut. We are grading 32 acres. Constructing that adjustable and adaptable inlet and outlet that allows us to. Control this basin even in future conditions. We have a costed and in-channel grade control structure near the inlet just to ensure that that channel does not drop any further and. Change the performance of the basin. It isn't hydraulically required, and if we do get degradation or channel restoration. By Stanford in the creek before we implement this project, that part could be taken out. We have outlet piping, we have grade stabilization and an emergency spillway. And we have maintained site access, including two prefabricated bridges. So in order to, you know, better bracket our cost understanding. Field data would need to be collected, and that would include geotechnical investigations and environmental soil testing. We would want to know the stability of the soils. We would not know the infiltration. And we would also want to uncover any potential for, you know, contaminated soils. Special status plant and wildlife surveys are important here. There are special status species, of course. And this will help us to define the amount of potential for mitigation and permitting difficulty. We do know that there's an eagle nest across the creek, which will limit the construction window. And we would need additional survey and utility locating to to perform a final design. Also, it would be very beneficial to start discussions with regulators early so that we can smooth any permitting that would need to take place. Including Division of Safety of Dams permit, which would be required due to the volume and height of the impoundment. Section 404, section 401, stream bed alteration agreement, regional board construction general permit. And of course, we would need a permit from the county for the drilling. Also of note, it would be recommended that we seek a determination of eligibility for a couple of cultural resources sites that could. Be impacted that do abut this location. We find that it's unlikely that those would be accepted. For the National Registry, but it would behoove us to submit for that and get that confirmation from them. And this would help us to potentially look at the benefits and costs of this project and whether it makes sense to move it forward. So we might understand. You know, the preliminary cost estimate, we could home home in on that number. And then we could also look at the potential for project benefit and use that as an offset to really justify. Whether we would take more steps with this project. So that's the the highlights and overview of where we are and where we've been, but I'm happy to take questions. I love talking about this stuff, so.
Yes, well, thank you for the presentation and I'll open it up for. Board members for any questions or comments.
Sure, if I may.
Sure.
Chair, first, I really want to compliment our. Executive Director for. Resetting the relationship with Stanford that allowed us to. Do a more extensive look at this project. The the two sites. Can we go back to those graphs?
Absolutely. This one?
Yeah. So am I getting this right? When you say pro- when you say project versus future project, what's the difference between those on the axis?
Absolutely. Okay, so first, we have two scenarios that we look at. One is today, the world as it is. And one is this hypothetical scenario where Searsville is constructed. Which means that we have a reduction in peak flow just coming from Searsville. So there's already some some benefit there.
Is that the right one or the left one?
That one would be the right-hand side, the future. Existing versus.
Okay, so the future project's the Searsville project.
It is Searsville, and it is also anticipating degradation within the creek. Due to the restoration that they are undertaking and obviously the flushing of that sediment. So we have those two scenarios in time that we've looked at. To make sure that the project would still function if that that occurs and. Provide operational flexibility. So we designed in changing height of the weir and changing outlet control. Additionally, you will see that we have an existing and a project on both of those, and that's. You know, before we implement the project and after, so that we are able to compare the contribution of the project to those hydraulics.
Yeah, I guess I'm, it's probably my ignorance. I'm still a little confused about, you know. What is the, you know, your project? Are you talking about the potential? Web Ranch project? Or is this the Searsville and aggregation project or? Is one.
Let's talk about both of these plots individually first. So the orange.
I think we need to do some more labeling in the future, just or maybe I'm missing it.
Yes, sir, will do. The orange line on the left is the existing condition. That's where we are today. The blue line is if we take that existing condition and we add this basin on the former Plant Nursery site. And you can see the change in performance downstream at Pope Chaucer where we've extracted this data.
I see. So project on the left. Is the potential, the basin?
Yes, at the Plant Nursery site, regardless of anything at Web Branch. This is just.
I see.
Location.
And then on the right is where you say future existing because I'm a little confused by existing and future.
Yes, so on the right, we are looking at the orange line where we have aggregation in the channel and Searsville implemented, but nothing built in the floodplain. That's the existing condition of the future. Then, after we build a basin. In the floodplain at the former Plant Nursery, we see the blue line and how that that same channel with the aggregation with Searsville in place will perform. So you're you're putting yourself in the future. The orange line is where we would be. And with the basin in place, we get the dark blue line.
I'd like to just point out on these graphs while we've got them up, the the one on the left. The Y-axis at the top is 9,000 cubic feet per second, and on the right. It's 8,000 cubic feet per second. So although these graphs look almost identical to the eye. If you look at the top of the blue, the peak of the blue on the left, it's about 7,400 cubic feet per second. But the one on the right is about 1,000. 900 less. And so there could be economic benefit from the one on the right, and we can talk about that.
If so. So maybe in the future, we show graphs like above 5,000 same axis, or we just show the difference between the base case. Because my eyes, like Mayor Bert said, it's hard for me to see the difference, but now that you pointed out.
Certainly, and it's small, so that doesn't help. And, you know, I've been in front of it for a long time, so it makes it easier for me to understand, but I I. I see that, and we will do a better job of labeling these.
Okay. All right, I think Pat, you had some questions or comments.
Yeah, thanks. So yeah, I I concur. Let's get rid of the oxymoron, future existing. And and then I would encourage you to. Have the same scale on the Y-axis on both, then we really get to visualize the impact. So just following up on that, if we're, our aim is 7,500 CFS. The, the. What is, if we get the Searsville project, then what is the need? For this one?
So I'll I'll take that, Millie.
Okay.
So you're correct. If Searsville is in place, we think we can pass the 7,500 through the Pope Chaucer site. And that's the capacity of the Reach Two channel with all planned Reach Two improvements. The potential benefit would be financial in that if we further reduce the water surface elevation and thereby take some people out of the floodplain because we've reduced it enough to have enough freeboard. Along the channel, then people may not be, may not need to pay into the flood insurance program. So that's why we're trying to develop an economic benefit and do a cost-benefit analysis to see if there's value to doing this.
Okay, so that's. I I'd forgotten that we need to have that freeboard to prospectively get people out of FEMA insurance requirements. That would be good for us to put two different goals wherever we have them. And just label them as such. And I I remember now that having been pointed out to me in the past, and I forgot that. Okay. And then I'm just, I'm glad to see that the the nursery site, rather than what I would call the Web Ranch site. Would be able to meet this need. That's that's encouraging as well. On the FEMA insurance, we in the past had tried to look at how many potential properties. Would be favorably impacted if we were able to hit there. I I'd encourage us to bring that back up. Because as the public looks at this. And the agencies, frankly, the benefits accrue to the property owners financially. But. It's it's. The the expenses would go to a public, different public agencies. And that's just probably the dilemma we're in unless we created an assessment district to pay for this, which at one time we were talking about, that if people look at. At the cost avoidance that they'd be able to achieve, it's very significant. Do we? Have handy refresher on? What's the current flood insurance cost? And I think if I recall, FEMA had went from a flat rate to kind of a. A more variable rate. If it's been a couple of years, but I seem to remember that. And how many parcels potentially would be? Impacted favorably by getting the 100-year protection with freeboard?
Director Bert, we can look into that. The number of parcels wouldn't change, but their costs might. In fact, because the way FEMA 2.0, the risk rating 2.0 is structured. That may bring their rates down.
It doesn't remove anybody from.
The way, the way FEMA has structured their risk rating 2.0, it doesn't change the maps, but it does change the actuarial tables. So they are basing their their flood premium, interest premium rates on a series of calculations based in part on. How many times certain properties have flooded in the past? And although we have certainly experienced flooding. Compared to other locations in the country, we have experienced less flooding. So generally speaking, for our geography, the the. Federal flood insurance rates have actually gone down.
But. It's it's only retrospective on in terms of number of historic floods in the past, and maybe this is part of what has changed. It was. That when we. We mapped out based upon the project, there were parcels. Significant number of parcels that would be completely removed from the. Potential flood impact areas.
Right, so but if we're just looking at the cost. Of flood insurance per parcel. Versus the map of where those parcels exist. The rates themselves may be going down, but at at in the current conditions with the current floodplain. Until we complete our projects, those flood maps aren't changing.
No, but I'm talking about upon completion of the project.
To clarify for my, the. FEMA changing the way they assess. The premiums does not is what Margaret is talking about. We don't think that that takes anybody out of the footplane. The project itself, we're hopeful, will take people out of the foot.
And that's, and so I was referring to. When we get. The project complete, and if this was the final leg of completing a project, although maybe it's going to be Searsville, we don't know sequentially, which would come first. How many parcels would be removed from FEMA requirements? And what would be the dollar impact? To those individuals and in aggregate. And I'm not expecting you necessarily have that at your fingertips. But that was a lot of what we were talking about. I don't know. Five, six years ago, when we were first looking at, okay. What are the pros and cons of going all the way to taking people out of the 100-year event?
And that's that's potentially the next step is to to develop a way to. Determine how many. Parcels can be removed and what's the the financial benefit of that? Financial value of that.
Okay, great. And then when we would excavate at the nursery site, is the, it anticipated that all of that dirt would be hauled? Or would it be able to be relocated in that area similar to what was done when Felt Lake was constructed? We, when we look at Felt Lake, we. We we don't often appreciate that the entire. Lateral edge of Felt Lake is artificial from, I believe, primarily excavation.
Yeah, so the way that we have implemented the preliminary design. Yeah, so the way that um we have implemented the preliminary design is to excavate the floodplain area out, leaving the riparian area intact to minimize impacts on the creek itself. So there is a significant amount of uh excavated and removed material, three hundred fifty thousand cubic yards. And that is not reused on site under the present design. There is no place for that to go while still allowing for the present land uses. And so we've built in an assumption of a haul of up to twenty five miles in the cost estimate. Unclear whether there would be um a specific location, it could be reused, that's ideally closer.
Um, so I'm just, um, when you, when you say that uh it couldn't be relocated near, near the site, you know, almost adjacent, based on existing land uses, I'd be interested in a deeper dive on that. Um, uh, as to what, what would make it infeasible to elevate some of the adjacent areas uh with this excavated dirt?
Good question, okay. So if we look at the topography of the site, um, there's a very flat floodplain immediately adjacent to the creek, goes to about the middle of the current basin. And then from there, you can see that there is a steep hill that commences on the eastern side. Um, so we are actually excavating most of the material out of this side here on the east. Um, I I wouldn't rule out being able to place some material on this site, but we are already at a a pretty significant cut here on site. And to maintain a a very gradual slope to allow for continued land use and site access with equipment, uh, we wouldn't want to build up that hillside farther. Um.
Well, one thought, uh, even if it's not immediately adjacent, is places like Felt, uh, where we have, uh, like it it looks, it's almost like a lateral moraine. Uh, but the um, the uh edge of of felt that runs closest to and parallel to Sand Hill is an artificial mound running the length of that lake. I don't know whether there's any possibility, for example, to just elevate that there. And it's, what are we, we're looking at um, uh, a mile or so, uh, which is a big difference. And then, of course, um, as we're dealing with sea level, we have a whole bunch of issues on uh how vital infrastructure that cannot be, uh, cannot retreat from the bay would potentially need to be elevated. Uh, so we'll see. Uh, but I just want to kind of not look for answers today, but put down on the table some possibilities that could drive the cost down to the low end of our range, hopefully.
Absolutely, and we haven't looked at that yet, but it is um, it is something that should be looked at, for sure.
And then lastly, is there any possibility? I I first, I hadn't appreciated that there's an eagle's nest uh in this adjacent area. Um, is there any possibility of a more limited uh permanent wetland in the shallowest part of this um excavation? Uh, that would pro uh enhance the, the needed wetlands that we, we are, are migratory birds and others desperately value and and that those, those eagles love?
Great question, and now something that we particularly looked at yet, but I will say that there is an existing seasonal drainage on the northeastern corner of the property that does appear to have established a small wetland area to would require mitigation post, you know, the construction of the basin. Um, if that drainage continued to function as it does now, and if properly prepared, could we uh continue to have a a wetland area there potentially? Um, and I think we'd have to look at that um with agency insight as well as to the value of that and how, how to set it up so that it wouldn't cause potential for further predation or anything like that with with the steelhead concern, so.
Well, and um, this kind of ties into my last question is on the, on the funding. Uh, what potential funding sources might we have in any grants? Uh, and uh, would wetland creation, uh, permanent wetland creation, albeit shallow, um, that would, you know, uh, allow us to uh still have the bulk of our retention capacity? Um, would that potentially um provide revenue as a mitigation for other uh wetland loss elsewhere? Uh, uh, I know that there's kind of a market in that, uh, but I'm not very versed on that.
It's a good question and not one that we've investigated further. I off the cuff would say that um, since there's an existing wetland area, if we were to reestablish, I don't think we'd get much credit for reestablishing something that was there other than maybe not having to mitigate elsewhere. Um, we would be challenged with the uh existing land use concern of Stanford's uh if they remain the landowner and wish to use this parcel as it has historically been used or to have it free for their use. Um, you know, those two things would be a give and take. If you were to try to establish a wetland there, um, obviously you would need their buy-in.
Right. And are there, have we, do we have any sense of any prospective funding sources that uh we would be able to tap in for, to for this project, or is it too early to have that sense?
Director Burt, it's a little too early, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, Dave, I think you wanted to jump in, go ahead.
Um, thanks, um, Director Burt covered some of my questions, uh, particularly about the excavation and placement of the of the materials. But, uh, you know, overall, the the cost of the project is is a lot more substantial than I would have imagined. You know, what, what, you know, what, what factors can bring that down?
Yeah, yeah, let's talk about, um, so the the key assumptions um are around that excavation and haul. Um, I think one thing that could potentially bring it down a bit, um, and I don't know the answer to how much, is uh leveraging that parcel to the north, which is also owned by Stanford, which is flatter, which would greatly reduce the excavation into this eastern hillside. Uh, preliminary discussions with them, they seemed like they might be open to it, but our initial constraints were keep it all on this parcel. So we could potentially expand this to the north a bit, um, which also helps us in terms of avoiding one of the cultural resources locations um of concern. Um, so there's a couple of aspects to that that could help. Um, I think as we are able to work with the permitting entities to better understand concerns and potential for impact there, uh, I think that that would help us. Um, we do have, as I mentioned, a number of data gaps, and I have a, a list of key assumptions in our report that talks about, um, you know, concerns around the soils. Um, you know, the, the way that the basin will ultimately be designed and optimized. Um, and and how we permit and and deal with mitigation uh as some of the primary concerns. And those uh suggested data collection efforts should help us narrow that piece down.
Okay, thanks for that background. And then, uh, maybe a question for Margaret. So so Margaret, where do we think kind of stand with our dialogue with 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 Stanford? And what's kind of, what are the next steps in the, in that discussion?
I think this is an ongoing conversation with them as they are beginning their sequel process, their long sought and at long last commencing sequel process for Searsville. We haven't, we have an opportunity, and I have broached the question with them. How can we make our respective projects mutually beneficial? Is there some way that we could design this detention basin? Or provides, you know, uh, what work could we do here that meets our objectives and may also be beneficial for them? Is there a design opportunity? Is there a mitigation opportunity? Is there a, like, like Director Burt was suggesting, is there a soil swap opportunity? Um, those conversations have just begun because they are in such early stages with their engineering and design. But the door is very open and the dialogue is very friendly. So I'm confident that we can have a positive and productive conversation. I have no idea at this moment if it will actually result in something like, you know, uh, a a significantly reduced cost or a significantly different design option.
Okay, thank you.
So talking about um, the cost, um, since this is a Stanford land, uh, are 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 we assuming that they're just letting us use the land? Or since they're the landlords, are they going to charge something? Or is this a donation or, uh, yeah, what's the story on that?
Kevin, do you want to take that? I I'd happy to, but I see you're smiling.
Well, I'm smiling because it's, it, there's no, there's no clean path to to answer that question. I think that um, finding an arrangement by, through which we purchase land from Stanford would be, would be tricky and and um, if they retain the ownership of the underlying land, then we'd need some sort of agreement about how this facility is operated. Um, I think that's a, and I don't think, Millie, we've included land costs in in the um, in the cost estimate. So developing whatever, and if it costs us money, I mean, if we become a leaseholder for this facility, then that's an additional cost that we have not yet considered. Um, so there's things like that that could actually add to the long term operational cost of a facility like this. So, sorry, sorry, Margaret, I wasn't smiling because I had a great answer, so go ahead if you've got something.
No, 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 that was pretty much what I was going to say. I just wanted to give you the floor because you had to smile.
The uh, okay, well, uh, a lot of great um, issues have come up, and I know this is a continuing conversation and coming up with more information. But any additional questions uh from board members? If not, I'll also open to the-
Chair, I have a good question. So am I right? Let's say you're saying between thirty five, you know, you're kind of saying it's a fifty million dollar project. Am I, I I know it's super preliminary, correct?
Yeah.
That, so, you know, if you think about it and very preliminary, that's three point five million dollars a year, you know, amortized over thirty years. It's probably more than that approximately. Are, is there three point five million dollars of benefit? And I know you're gonna be getting the cost benefit ratio later on that homeowners or other businesses are seeing in terms of flood uh premium reduction. I mean, that's kind of-
That is the key question and that's why-
Isn't that really the key? I would love to know where it looks, yeah. Yeah.
Really being able to refine the costs and understand what the project benefits are helps you decide whether it makes sense to move forward, right? If the project is justified.
Because I think what Mayor Burt said makes tons of sense, this idea of beneficiary pays or beneficiary pays within reason, I should say. Um, so I'd love us to relook at that, because I don't know where that assessment district went. Um, I know we can legally do it, but uh, you know, maybe in the future, you might want to look at that.
Agreed, that is one very significant potential opportunity for funding, for funding watershed stewardship, including the ongoing costs of operating the upstream detention. Um, I would suggest we bring back to the board in perhaps three or four months a more detailed update that includes that, some of, some more of those calculations about the floodplain, the projected cost of flood insurance and um, and and other project costs. So we can give you a better uh, a more focused cost benefit uh picture.
Okay, um, so let me ask if there are any members of the public wanting to speak on this or any questions from the public, and then we can continue, since this is a, a presentation only.
Jerry Hearn?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you for the opportunity. Say, say a few words. I have a couple of comments and then a couple of questions uh for Millicent. My, one comment has to do with Stanford and the potential use of this land. My long experience with Stanford is, as I've said before, is they are very reluctant to give up the usages of their land and the freedom to use it as they wish. So I, and Margaret, I, I think that's a great idea to see if there's some kind of a benefit that Stanford could derive from this project. I'm not quite sure what it is, but it certainly is worth exploring. Um, the other thing is, as we know from having sat through uh all the meetings at Searsville, the uh distribution of soil and the movement of the soil is a highly, highly challenging task due to the fact that uh in certain circumstances, the soils have to meet some pretty high standards to be used for certain uses. And just the, the mere cost of moving it, uh, the distances that we're looking at, whether it's short or long, uh, and and uh tho- those also have environmental costs in terms of uh carbon footprint. So um, you, you know, that's something to be considered as we look at, look at this uh approach. Again, uh, to me, the cost benefit is not just about the um, the potential uh financial cost, but it's also the environmental costs that you're incurring when you're doing such a, such a project. Uh, the two questions I have is uh, one is, I think I heard that in the inflow side, there would need to, of the uh structure, there would need to be a weir uh to, my, my assumption is a weir to channel, you know, of a certain height. Yeah, this is my understanding of it in order that, and then flows would be directed. Or is this an operable weir? Or is this a, just a uh in-stream structure that functions uh according to the rates of flow?
Great question, Jerry. Let me point you to our site plan as I talk through this a little bit. So there are actually two things um that you touched on, and I want to clarify where those are. So one is the inflow weir, the inlet weir. This is a passive structure. It's just a a low point in the channel uh bank that allows high flow to divert passively. It is operable insofar as you can place flashboards on this weir structure to raise it as the channel bottom raises in a future condition where there's aggregation in the channel. It is adjustable weir height to control that inflow. There is also in the cost estimate and in the site plan a um, structure within the channel uh that is not hydraulically required. So under the current condition with the channel bottom where it is, this is a structure that is inset into the bottom of the channel just to prevent that channel bottom from degrading any further should the uh stream restoration not be accomplished before this project. So if that project comes in first and you've already got great control within the channel, you won't need that part of the project.
Right. So a follow on question there is my, uh, my concern about having structures in the channel has to do with uh fish passage. So have you factored that in?
Absolutely, right.
What, what are you looking at just out of curiosity?
So that structure within the channel is inset into the bottom of the channel. So it's not to raise the bottom of the channel.
Right.
Um, hydraulically, it performs as it is. If the channel degraded further.
Yeah.
Then um, that structure could be constructed um, not with fixed rock and concrete, but with loose rock that could adjust or be adjusted to lower um a notch in the center to allow fish passage if needed. You know, we can look at how that would be adaptable if it was required during final design.
Okay, that sounds kind of clever. I'd like to, it'll be interesting to see how that pans out uh when you get more detail. Uh, my, my other question is, you, you made mention very quickly about the necessity for two bridges.
Yes.
Could you uh comment a little bit more about? I'm fairly familiar with the site, and I'm just wondering why the need for bridges and where they would be placed.
Great question.
These are, these are uh, you, these are ready-made, you just bring them on and install them.
That's right, yeah. Pre-graduated. At this time, that's how it, that's how it's laid out. So currently, the access road to the site comes in from the south. If you envision kind of bottom right of the screen, and it goes right up through the middle of where this basin would be. So to maintain access, you can access um from the eastern edge due to this very gradual slope that's graded in. But on the left side, on the stream channel side through the riparian area, uh, adjacent to the riparian- Uh adjacent to the riparian area, you also need access to particularly the outflow structure and the inlet weir to ensure they're clear and operable. And so that um that overflow spearway here, the emergency overflow spillway, is. A depression within the embankment, and so you have a small bridge over that. Um and then similarly with the inlet weir, because that is cut into the bank, you need to be able to drive over that to maintain access to the north up towards the slack facility, which is where that road currently runs. So just to maintain the status quo of access and to be able to service those facilities as needed, um we did install bridges there.
Yeah, I did. That that makes a lot of sense. I was thinking you were bridging across the creek, and I saw no reason for that in this place, but that makes a lot of sense. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Certainly.
Are there any other requests from the public uh Miko that you can tell or?
I have not received any additional requests. Would anyone else like to speak at this time?
And uh and if we don't, then um unless there's any last minute question or comment from board members. If not, then. Thank you very much for the great presentation and all the topics that were covered by participants. Thank you.
Certainly. Thanks for having me.
Okay, so if we uh can get the agenda up, I think it's now. Uh director's report, thanks.
Uh let's see. So just very quickly, since it has been a fairly brief interlude since our last board meeting. Um and as you read in your packet, there are just a few updates. Uh we are working to update the funding gap table that from time to time appears in your board packet. The funding and the costs are um being discussed right now. We have some both changes in grants and some grant opportunities that will be reflected in the next cost update. The cap two oh five program and the top of bank uh and the channel widening are all closely related. Cap two oh five is being potentially slowed down a little bit as we consider the requests and interests of. Our project neighbors at Site Widening Three, who have expressed significant concerns about impacts to the trees at the uh. Backwater of their properties um from the the envisioned channel widening work. Um we are looking at whether we can widen in on both sides or whether we can widen on one side. But use a slightly different approach um and thereby minimize the impact to their property. Um that evaluation is taking a little delay, the entire process a little bit, but we think it's a a thoughtful way of approaching. This design conundrum and making sure that we have both the best engineering solution and the best solution for our project neighbors. Um we continue to have regulatory agency updates and keep them informed of our progress and of the. S- slight changes in timing, addition of of new engineering considerations for particularly Site Widening Three. And what it might mean for our permitting framework if we have to widen on two sides of the channel. So that's reached two very briefly for Safer Bay. We have completed the responses to comments on the notice of preparation. That document has been both published on our website and conveyed to the stakeholders who all commented. For funding, um as you may recall, we are going, uh we have the privilege of having the uh San Francisco Bay Restoration Authority. Consider additional funding for the Safer Bay project, its sequo and restoration efforts, and they will be considering that in their March twenty twenty-three board agenda. And um. That is it for the updates, and then we can move on to uh unless you have any questions, we can move on to action item.
Have any questions on any part of the report now? And. If there are no requests from the public, then we can move on to seven.
Not seeing any requests at this moment to speak.
Yeah, so the action item, you want to tell us?
Sure, this action item is a reflection of the um supplementary environmental impact report that's necessary for the top of bank structures. Although top of bank was a generally speaking, a a component of the certified environmental impact report. This may be a a significant enough difference or additional work that it is considered prudent on advice of legal counsel and our experts in SEQA. That we conduct a supplementary environmental impact report. We released a request for proposal. The EMC Planning Group Incorporated from Monterey were the uh exclusive respondents. However, after a thorough review by our member um agency staff representatives. Uh it was just determined that their proposal was competitive and their qualifications were absolutely in line with what was necessary. So we are recommending that we uh conduct, that we enter a contract with EMC Planning Group. And um ask them to conduct this supplementary EIR for us.
Okay, any questions on this? Remember? Any? Questions or comments from the public?
Have no request to speak. Would anyone like to comment on this agenda item?
And so if if not, then I can entertain a motion for us to move on this.
I'll make that motion to um approve the resolution.
Okay. I'll I'll second, and we'll have roll call.
Director Braker.
Yes.
Director Combs.
Yes.
Director Burke.
Yes.
Director Kemen.
Yes.
Director Pine.
Yes.
Okay. And uh. Yeah, let's, I think I did hear uh Director Combs and uh meeting, is that correct, Drew? Yes, okay.
He is present.
For sure, he he joined our meeting, and um we'll go to our next item. If uh.
Here we go. We have a closed session this evening, and I assume that Miko will set up a breakout room for that purpose, so.
Let me, yes, I'm gonna say I'm not gonna attend this uh closed session. I believe there might be a conflict.
Okay.
So let me ask if there are any uh requests from the public to speak on this item before we we go into closed session.
I haven't received any request to speak. Would any member of the public like to speak on agenda item number eight, the closed session?
All right, so we'll, so then we just stay here and you just put us in rooms. Is that correct? Okay, all right, so we'll be back momentarily. Thank you. Okay, I think we're. I think we're back um from closed session, and so. Were we convened into open session and ask our council to report out?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Briga. We met in closed session to discuss anticipated litigation, and there is no reportable action from that closed session.
Okay, thank you. And then uh we'll definitely want to wish everyone a good holiday season coming up and. Uh I'll open it up for any other comments or announcements from board members.
Uh just a question, are we um, do we have a December meeting on the fifteenth or not? We do.
I think we are scheduled, yes, we are scheduled to have a meeting, yes.
And that will be a virtual.
Yes, it will. We'll be returning to in-person meetings beginning in March.
Okay, thank you.
If I could make one comment, if our board members don't mind asking their clerk of the boards to reach out, because I'm trying to get the schedule set for next year. And I can't seem to make contact with any of them, so if you could kind of nudge them to respond, because we usually post our schedule to you all in December.
So you're asking us.
Just ask your clerk of the boards to call me, please, because I've left messages, I've sent emails, I need to build our schedule, and I can't get a hold of anyone.
Oh, but you need what information from them in addition to?
Yes.
What? No, I was, sorry, I wasn't clear on what information you're seeking from them.
We are going back to in-person meetings, which means we need to use your council chambers.
Got it. Okay, that's what I, that's what I need to understand.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Miko, can I ask that you send the 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 city clerk an email and CC me with this request? And if you've sent it already, just send it again and and make sure I'm CC.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
We'll follow up. Okay. Uh. But one less, just a little report, but um we did have a uh citywide cleanup, you know, in the fall. October twenty ninth, and I do want to report, we collected a hundred and twenty big huge bags, so at least some. And it did rain, so the point got across a little bit, you know, for us, I think, to keep doing this, definitely twice a big city cleanup in addition to other ones that happened, so that was good. And we had some young people participating, so that was, I was happy about that. Thank you. Okay, all right. All right, well, then we stand adjourned at this point. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Okay, bye.